May June 12th Board Education Meeting and as usual, we will start with the pledge of allegiance. Let's take it out of the way here. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. All right, Mr. Dowler, are you aware of any changes to our agenda?
No changes to the agenda.
Have moved to approve the agenda for the other.
Second that. Thank you. Motion from Rick, seconded by Dave to approve our agenda. Are there questions on it? All in favor of approval signify with aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Thank you. Minutes are included in board docs from the previous meeting.
I'll move to approve minutes for the regular meeting held on May 22nd, 2023 as presented.
I'll second that. Thank you. That motion was from Jennifer, seconded by Dave to approve our previous meeting minutes. Questions on those? All in favor of approval, please signify with aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Thank you. E is vouchers and those two are included.
I have moved to approve the general checking account vouchers totaling $514,507.73 and building fund 49 vouchers totaling $119.41 as presented. I'll second that.
Thank you. That motion by Dave is seconded by John to approve our vouchers in those two amounts enumerated. Anyone have questions? All in favor of approval signify with aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Thank you. And we are in an odd time and we do not have student council representatives, so we will anxiously await the return of those reps in the fall, would be my guess. Moving past that, this public comment, and I picked up the sheets with no one having signed up, so we will roll along past that. We are on record pace too, just so you can keep track. Superintendent update, A is Red Hawk Highlights, Rich.
Trying to keep that positive length of going here. Couple things that I want to note in the Red Hawk Highlights and then I know a couple of two other agenda items in the superintendent's update. So, I want to congratulate Northside student Jack Smith for receiving the moment of caring award from the Lakeside Fire and Rescue Team. Earlier, a friend of Jack's's family had an extreme medical emergency while they were out fishing with Jacks and he showed incredible composure and stepped in to assist. He was able to contact emergency responders, help with medication, with calm, caring presence throughout the situation. And the friend credits Jack for saving his life in that day with his actions. So, the Lakeside Fire and Rescue came to Northside on June 6th to present him with their moment of caring award. So, very proud of that work by Red Hawk and happy to celebrate that his moment of caring. In our varsity sports, we've got a couple of groups that have advanced to the state tournament. Three Red Hawk Boys tennis players qualified for state. Logan Ethan, Reed Washkobeak, and Colton Conway all qualified for the state tournament. Who is our first boys single player to make the state since 2007, so 16 years. The last singles tennis player and the first doubles team since 2019. So, congratulations to Logan, Reed, and Colton. And the Red Hawk Boys Golf Team won the regional and sectional golf tournaments and the team advanced to the state tournament on June 6th, holding the state tournament. Congratulations to the Boys Golf Team. And then the last thing on the Red Hawk Highlights is just to again recognize our graduation ceremony. I know a number of board members were able to attend. The entire team at High School, they've really done outstanding job of preparing and presenting the graduation. But particularly, particularly want to mention the music department, the student services team, the office staff, our building and grounds team, and our administrative team at Memphis High School. It really was a beautiful ceremony and I want to congratulate all of our 2023 graduates. I'm collecting some celebrations for overall for the entire year from each school and department and really bring yours to the next quarter. It's kind of an overview of highlights for the year. But that was everything on the Red Hawk Highlights. Has anyone has any question or things to add to those items? If not, the next agenda item, I wanted to give an update to the board and to the viewers on budget planning. We're continuing to build the preliminary budget for the coming year. We will bring that to the board for approval at the next board meeting on June 26th, so two weeks from tonight. We have a finance committee meeting tomorrow morning to go into those details a little bit more deeply. And the unknowns still for next year's budget, the two biggest unknowns are the fall enrollment, so that doesn't get finalized until the third Friday count in September. And then the state budget for education. You just got a notice last week that there's a tentative agreement that's been reached regarding state education funding, so it's not finalized yet, but it's a tentative agreement. If it is enacted, it wouldn't eliminate our budget shortfall, but it will decrease the amount of one-time money that we even need to use to balance our budget for the coming year. And our FTE allocation for our teachers, administrators, and supervisors is coming up in the agenda item 3B and that's related to our budget planning for next year. With those staffing allocations, we always do look at how we can align our staffing to any changes in enrollments at each level. Sometimes the enrollment overall at the district level is relatively steady, but there may be some increases at one level and decreases at another level. So, we always look at that on an annual basis. Obviously, we believe in budget reductions, we'll look for ways to reduce our expenditures, and we know that all staffing reductions are made through attrition. So, we talked about that being our goal, that we don't have to have any layoffs of anyone or non-renewals of anyone's contracts. And we are able to do that with our teaching and our administrative supervising groups. We'll be bringing the support staff FTE to the board for approval at the next board meeting two weeks from today. And then the last thing that I want to share in the superintendent's update is some information on projected class sizes. Again, these are projected, they're based on what our current enrollment is, but we always know that between now and the start of the next school year, there are families in the middle school district, families in the middle school district, so there's always some changes to that enrollment. But we look at projected class sizes for grades 4K through sixth grade, and then we look at student teacher ratios for grades 7 through 12 because there can be some pretty large disparities, disparities between one class and another at the middle school and high school depending on how many kids sign up for the different classes. So, we look at what's our ratio of staff to our students to FTE. Again, we'll continue that planning into the fall once we have final enrollment numbers, but across our elementary grade levels, our projected class sizes in 4K is 14.1, which is a decrease from this current year. 4K is probably the one place where we'll be on the most change between now and the start of the school year with families deciding if they want to send their four-year-olds to 4K or not. So, we'll keep an eye on those numbers, but they're projected 14.1 per class for next year, which is down from 16 per section this year. In our kindergarten through third grade classes, overall, that average class size is 20.6. So, that is current here, so that's for all of our regular K through classrooms, that average is 20.6 for this year. It's projected to go up to 21.2 for next year. So, a slight increase at kindergarten through third grade level, but still very reasonable class sizes, which is an average 21.2. At Northside at our grades 4 through 6, this year that average class size is 23.9 and we are projecting that that will go up to 25.2 for next year. The increase will come at sixth grade with fourth and fifth grade staying pretty steady to where they are this year. In seventh and eighth grade, and again for the middle school and the high school, these are the ratios of students per FTE. That isn't the average class size because that doesn't take into account the teachers' have prep periods during their day and there can be wider swings from one class to the next at these grade levels. So, it's not comparable to the numbers that we just shared. But at the middle school currently this year, that student to FTE ratio is 17.5 and that's a projected go up to 17.9 for next year. And at the high school, it currently is 19.7 and is projected to remain at 19.7 for next year. And all of those projections take into account the teacher FTE that are in the proposal that's coming up in the future agenda. So, any questions, comments on either the budget planning or on the projected class size and student to FTE ratios?
So, I have a question. So, what you're saying at the high school is that the incoming eighth grade is similar in size to the exiting senior class, that would be that that's why that would move?
No, it's the incoming eighth grade is smaller than the outgoing 12th grade, but we have a staffing reduction that offsets that.
Okay.
So, with the change in enrollment and for all of these, it's taking into account the projected change in enrollment and the projected change in staffing for sure. So, thanks for the questions so that I could clarify that.
Would it be possible that heavy stuff that forces available for reference?
Yeah.
I can see.
That was everything that I had.
Okay, any other questions for Rich? If not, we are down to three HR, they are in their busy season as most of you know. This is when we get frequent meetings and lots of ground to cover, so I'll turn it over to Rick to capture what they've been working on.
Okay, thanks Joe. The HR committee has met twice since our last board meeting. We met on May 31st and June 7th. I'm going to combine items A and C here unless anyone has an objection to that. First one was the support staff FTE, the 23-24 support staff FTE, and C is 20-23-24 support staff compensation. HR committee had discussions around both the staff support staff FTE and support staff compensation for the upcoming school year. No final decisions have been made on those. So, we will have additional conversations about each of those at our next HR meeting on June 21st, and then these agenda items will be brought back to the board for review and possible approval at our June 26th board meeting. Did anyone have any questions about either of those?
I can just add one thing on that, Rick, and it's tied to, I shared earlier that the next, the other agenda item 3B is around the professional staff FTE. We've shared that with our budget reductions for next year for professional staff or that we didn't make any layoffs or non-renewals. The same is true for our support staff. So, we've made some reductions to balance our budget, but we've done it in a way that if we reduce a position where that person in that position is planning to come back, we have another place for that person, so there isn't any, no layoffs in that group here. Chris, did you have anything else to add to that?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. We'll move on to item B, which is a discussion of possible action on 2023-24 professional staff FTE.
Rick, can I question for a second? I didn't have a question.
Sorry.
That's okay. You just, you just, I just want to ask, I mean, obviously the winner, even though it's through, you know, attrition, it's still going to create a deficit at some level that's going to impact students and the future staff. Is there any discussion about bringing those positions back from the time as well, specifically looking at the last, the, you know, the two instructional coaches, the reading teacher and the technology integrator, that's a pretty big whack for the district as far as those support systems and then criticizing the choice of traces that it may, but it's still going to create a deficit and we have any discussions on what to do in the future, how bring those back?
Yeah, and it's very much tied to, in the fall, once we have our full enrollment numbers and we have the final state budget, the board would start doing some budget projections for the upcoming years. I'd rather agree strongly with you that those positions, although they aren't classroom teacher positions, they're very, very important support positions. And yeah, if it's, if we were in a different financial situation, or if we are down the road, I think those are things that do have a bad foot to students.
For sure. I think we're just having maybe a priority list like if they bring one back, this is the one we were in that first, second, third. Obviously, as time goes on, that changes, but thank you.
Rich, for the approximately seven and a quarter change in FTE, were staff members given the choice to essentially apply for previous positions or are they reassigned based on their individual licensure and skill set or how the net process works?
That's specific to the teaching staff.
Yeah.
Okay. Did, Rick, did you have anything that you wanted to preface that conversation?
Sure. Oh, sorry. Did I get that?
That's all right.
Keep that and you'll comment back to it.
I'll get my report and we come back for further questions. Okay. So, there's a, the memo is included in board docs and you'll see the numbers listed there with the, for the professional staff FTE. As is done every year, we align the staffing needs to student enrollment. For this coming year, administration has identified reductions totaling 5.6 teacher FTE district-wide. Better aligned district expenses to revenues, additional budget reductions have been proposed to the board totaling 5.0 FTE. To avoid teacher layoffs, we propose adding 1.10 teacher FTE. And to meet student needs, we also propose adding 1.35 teacher FTE. It's all, it's important to note that all of the reductions have been made through attrition. As of July 2023, the district will be utilizing 7.24 fewer FTE district-wide for the 2023-24 year than was approved on April 22nd, 2022. There's also one other thing you'll notice that the administrators was decreased by one and then the supervisors was increased by one due to the switch of the new technology position from administrator to supervisor muscle. Now, if there's any questions or Chris or Rich had anything to add to that?
I don't think Dave has to ask his question again. I'll go ahead and take a stab at that, Chris, if there's anything in addition to mine. Just to review that, Dave asked about the overall 7.24 reduction in teaching FTE and as it's laid out there, you recall that that takes into account changes that were made during the year last year that are highlighted in the memo, but a majority of those changes are either from our alignment to our enrollment changes and then our budget reductions. So, specific to your question about where people are placed, some of those positions are just reduced because of retirements or resignations and they're not, and so it isn't moving that person to another place, it's shifting who has responsibility for those duties or reducing the services that we're able to provide because that position is no longer there. In the cases where we did need to move someone to another position, we met with the principals to talk through what that potentially could look like and then had conversations with the staff members to offer them the positions. I would say it's safe to say that not every, it wasn't the first choice of everyone or someone would rather have stayed in the position that they were in, but I think everyone was pleased with the fact that we didn't have to lay anyone off.
I have a question. So, if I look in here and I add in what looks like it impacts the classroom at 7.6, am I reading that correctly? So, 5.6 is aligning the lower student count, one is additional budget reduction for attrition classroom, and then I'm giving the reading teacher T, is that an in-classroom teacher or is that like a?
It's a reading intervention.
Okay.
Teacher, so it's not a classroom.
Is that a classroom? Okay, so then it would be 6.6.
It's a reading support, reading intervention.
Where are we seeing the impact of that 6.6 the most? Which area?
I think it's tied to, in the teaching reductions, I'll speak first to at the elementary schools. At the elementary schools, it really becomes a average class size. It's really a class size issue. For example, at Northside, instead of 10 sections that we have this year, we'll have nine sections next year. And what that does then is it increases the, take that whole group of students, split them on nine classes rather than 10. The same thing at the, at K through yet and at 4K, although with 4K, with a reduction of one 4K position, those class sizes are going to be smaller because there's considerably fewer students in 4K next year. But it's pretty straightforward through sixth grade. Reductions at those grade levels mean larger class sizes, but as I shared earlier, those average class sizes at all of our grade levels are still pretty reasonable. And I wouldn't say that there's any class sizes that are out of what we've seen in the past, yes. At seventh and eighth grade and at the high school, it depends on where those reductions are made. And just a moment. Well, at the, at the middle school, we reduced one position because of declining enrollment, and that was a math position. So, that position doesn't necessarily impact the other content areas. In fact, the other content areas might even have smaller averages next year than this year because there's fewer students moving into the middle school, they're moving out. In math, the middle school actually has restructured their schedule, so they'll be able to still meet student needs in math with that one fewer position.
And about the seventh grade level, is that school-wide?
Um, Tara, do you know how to best answer that one?
The actual position came from seventh grade, but collectively it's like a department impact. Because obviously math is a concern, you know, test scores are, you know, when we look at our math, sort of had a whole teacher FTE to take class size of where it was this year and hoping that's not going to grow to where the kids are impacted. But did you say at Northside, we're going from, we're going from not 10 to nine?
10 to nine at sixth grade.
And is that through because of the lower count or because of the budget reduction due to the cost savings?
That's a budget reduction to balance the budget. And then at grades nine through 12, there were a couple of different reductions. For the reduced enrollment, they were tasked with reducing of one FTE and they did a halftime math and a halftime art, so, excuse me, halftime music and a halftime art, not math. Halftime music, halftime art, so there'll be fewer offerings in those areas. And then Jeremy works with his, his team at the high school to determine what courses to offer and looks at what courses are not as popular with students or don't have as many students signed up. And then also tied, and it's kind of the domino effect of some of those support positions, but this current year, the library and media specialist is teaching one section each trimester in the English Language Arts Department. And that person, those sections are going to be reduced and then that person is going to pick up some of the work of the tech, technology integrationist, the position that we reduced. So, some of those duties will go to the LMC person who will be doing that rather than teaching those classes for next year. And then every, every year, let's say at, especially at the high school, they look at what courses do students want, how many core classes do we need, and then what, what optional classes for students do we want to offer to address what students need. So, I would say with our budget reductions for the coming year, we're still in a really good place with average class sizes and course offerings. I think I've said a few times that if you follow the news around Fort Atkinson School District where they're, they're reducing 44 positions across their district this year. And again, this is dependent on what ends up happening with state funding with our enrollment for next year, but what I've been telling people is we're kind of a year away from, a year behind Fort Atkinson. If we don't see increased funding from, from the state or from local sources and our enrollment projections remain where they are, we'll be looking at pretty significant reductions across the district a year from now.
But we're saying that we've gone down in enrollment, which is why some of this is there, so we're not seeing that trend up. I guess, I guess my concern is if we are to get additional funding, will we put that math teacher back in the middle school per se? Or is the intent because there's the student, we don't need it, it's not needed?
I think that they have a schedule planned without that position. I wouldn't, unless we get a significant number of new students, I wouldn't recommend that we, without a significant number of new students, I wouldn't recommend that we do it because even, even with the potential for additional state funding from the tentative agreement, the biggest increase of that is going to be, would be in the first year based on how that agreement is set up and we still would have some long-term budget concerns.
Thank you.
Let's kind of circle back and pick it back up then. And then again, not criticizing, just trying to understand the deficit, what it's going to impact the classroom. So, we're going to, basically, we have situations where more or less teachers are going to do more with less, but fair, more kids in the classroom, less instruction with math. I, the only thing that I would edit and add to that is that it's, it won't be just teachers that will be doing more with less. I would say all of our, all of our play groups will be doing more with less as a result of the budget.
That's true. Thank you for that. And then I want to circle back to the initial level of instructional coaches. We had five instructional coaches, number three?
Yes.
Those are district-wide?
Yes.
And we had one technicolor and we have zero?
Yes.
Okay. I'm just trying to understand the whole. Yeah, so those, the plan is that those instructional coach positions, a big part of their job this past year was working on the implementation of the new English Language Arts curriculum. So, we had actually three instructional coaches across 4K through third grade that were helping with that and they did, they've done a great job and those positions are really important. They really provide a lot of support for our teachers and, and for our principals at each of our levels. We're still finalizing the plans, but what we're looking at is that with the reduction from five to three is that we would have one of those at the K through level, one at the 4-6 level, and one at the seven, eight, and then also doing some things at the high school level. And then with the technology integrationist, some of that, those duties will go to the LMC folks in particular, the high school LMC, but also other LMCs, and then some of them will go to the tech department and some to other administrative positions.
Sorry, I'm going to pick it back up. One more question. Where do paraprofessionals fall in here? Because I understand we say teachers, so I know that paras obviously help our teachers. Where do they fall into the, are they in any of these categories?
Yeah, the paraprofessionals are aides falling into the support staff category. So, we'll be bringing support staff FTE to the next board meeting.
Okay.
And again, there we've looked at where our student needs, what are our places where we can make reductions but still meet student needs. A really easy example of that, if there is an easy budget reduction with the smaller 4K numbers for next year, and we have a, well, the 4K section, which means one 4K teacher and one 4K aide, because each section has an aide, are part of our reductions for next year. The 4K teacher position is through attrition because we had a retirement. The 4K aide will be finding another aide position for that person.
Joe, I'm going to make a motion to approve that 246.2 teacher FTE, 18 administrators FTE, and six supervisor FTE to the professional staff baseline use for the 2023-24 school year. Any additional FTE not listed on the baseline will be subject to Board Policy 3211 and brought forward to the Board for review and possible approval.
I'll second that. Okay, that motion was offered by Rick and seconded by Dave to approve our FTE numbers as he just outlined. Questions on the motion? All in favor of approval signify with aye, please.
Aye.
And opposed? Thank you, Rick, and HR, and Chris, and Rich, and everyone that worked on that. That was a bit of a challenge and a process. All right, moving on to new business. A is discussion and possible action on the 23-24 WIAA membership renewal. This is a very routine annual thing, Rich, you have anything else?
Yeah, just that it's every year, the Wisconsin Interschoolastic Association, WIAA, requires school districts to take a little action to join for the upcoming year. You can see on the document that's in board docs, the different sports that we provide, boys and girls are listed there. for the boys and girls that are listed there. And then we would need to sign off on this and send it to the WIAA.
Make the motion to approve the 23-24 WIAA senior high membership renewal list presented.
I'll second that.
Okay, once again, Rick's motion seconded by Dave to approve our WIAA membership. And I will pause. I just have a quick question to put in, and I'm finally motion second. Is, is girls hockey really a contact co-op sport? Is that correct?
Jeremy, do you know the answer to the one?
You know, I don't know the answer to that. That doesn't seem, that doesn't seem right.
Well, it just means that we're not the host co-op for girls hockey.
That's correct.
That's what I'm saying. Contact would be us for the boys hockey, we're a contact co-op. So we organize.
Good.
Okay. Not a, not a, not a, so I was just thinking.
That is exactly what that is.
Yes, yes.
We are the contact to WIAA, to the name, we challenge the organization, we, we, the contact from WIAA, Lloyd gets it for.
Interesting choice of words. I get where you're at there. That was my only question. Especially relative to hockey, that would be a puzzle, wouldn't it?
I would mention past its contact.
Yeah. Good signal. Okay, motion on the floor is to approve our WIAA renewal membership. Questions? All in favor, signify with aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Thank you. Okay, miscellaneous, A is our stat and report, which is included for you in board docs. I would move to approve the stat and report as second.
Second.
Thank you. All of our motions tonight are from Rick and Dave, so the rest of you, feel free to join in and get your name, get your name in the minutes, or maybe your presiding officer is still a little more wary up here or whatever, so. But anyway, Dave's motion seconded by Rick to approve the stat and report. Are there any questions on it? All in favor of approval, signify with aye.
Aye.
And opposed? That motion clearly passes. Thank you. And gifts and donations is next.
I'll look over.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Tracy's motion, seconded by John, is to approve our gifts and donations, which you can see the list of their, $6,697. Questions on those? And as always, with the gratitude of the district, those in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Thank you for that. How about some meeting dates?
A couple of different things that are already scheduled coming up. Our next regularly scheduled school board meeting is two weeks from tonight, Monday, June 26th at 6:30 here in PDC. We have tomorrow morning, a finance committee meeting that starts at 8:30, will be in the first floor conference room. We have two scheduled HR committee meetings coming up, one on Wednesday, June 14th at 4:00 PM in the Professional Development Center, that's for MEA negotiations. And then another on Wednesday, June 21st at 8:00 AM for MEA negotiations. A couple of things that we would like to get scheduled, maybe before I go to that, you recall that when, when the new board was seated, we had at one of our board meetings a copy of the upcoming board meetings for the year. And as we looked at, we found that it didn't follow, there were two spots where it didn't follow our normal second quarter month of each month. There were two times where there were five Mondays the month before, and then it got plugged into, and looked at the comparable date from previous year, it got plugged into the first and third, assuming that the board would like to go with the second, and stay with the second and fourth Mondays that we've done in the past. So those were the months of August, so August, and then we'll split this out to the board. But August 14th and 28th would be the two August board meetings, with the 28th being the end, and then a regular beginning to follow. And then, can I remember if it was 10? Okay. Yeah, so in May, I think originally it had the 6th and the 20th, and those are the first and third Mondays, so the 13th and the 27th of May would be the second and fourth Mondays. And then we would like to have a strategic planning committee meeting sometime this summer to review the district-wide goals that we set, and kind of start some conversation about updating those goals. One possibility that looked like it might work, the strategic planning committee, is July 12th in May. And I think we have two hours, generally think two hours is enough time. We started at 8, we started at 8:30.
Eight or 30 would be fine, if they heard themselves available.
Can you have a preference for start time?
Uh, eight would be great.
Okay. We can block and schedule until 10:00. That's on July 12th. And then we had talked, we do a couple of times a year, a data workshop for the board, and one of those is in the summer. And we've talked about, because those have a lot of information, we want to have a atmosphere where the board is able to ask questions, have a dialogue with the administrators. So if we want to do a summer board data workshop, we could just say, dig time for that. And Carly has reached out on some possible, possible windows for that. And did you say that from what you've heard back from folks so far, there was a week in, the second week in July was, was the only week where we don't have people who, at least from who we've heard back from, we didn't have anybody say that they were going to be out on vacation during that week. And we should be able to put that data together by then. It doesn't include the updated state report card data because we don't get that back in time, but it's, it's a, it's AP data, ACT data, spring I ready data, some SEL data that we'd like to share with the board. Are there any days, if you take a quick look at your calendar, are there any days of the week that wouldn't work? And would a preference be to do it during the day or before an evening?
I'd prefer evening, unless it's Friday afternoon. I can do it on Friday afternoon, that works for me, or anything.
That's a second week ago.
Yeah, the week of July 10th.
Tuesday night? Does that work?
Yeah. Tuesday the 11th?
Oh, and I could not do that. Today.
Could we leave before the, before noon? Yeah, I get it.
I can't do before, before noon. I can't either.
Can we tie it into that thing on the 12th?
Yeah, can we, can we just take another two hours after the strategic planning meeting?
We have a strategic planning meeting, maybe at eight till the morning. Does during the day, does, what we, most people, I don't know, I could get out earlier.
I could do that, I need to be active, the strategic planning meeting.
Or my sleep.
I'm seeing trace on sugar.
I can, I can do after 4:00, 5:30, Monday's is interesting, definitely. We can't do anything. And if we need, if we need to during the day, I can take time off, but it couldn't be the week because I'm just getting back from vacation that week, so I wouldn't be looking back for that.
How about if we send an email out to, to board members and people can respond, that we could, or we'll throw in some other possible ways to run that time.
Okay. That May 27th is the memorial day too. By the way, I kept the median calendar.
We'll have to make a tweak to that one, too. We'll, we'll make a change on it and hit it off to board. But that was, oh, one other thing. We have our HR committee meetings scheduled on the 14th and the 21st for negotiations. We should have at least one other time than it can be before, after one of those meetings at those times where for folks, because we want to come back to the board with the, with the support staff FTE and compensation. Chris, how much time do you think we'll need for that meeting?
I'm also, I got an email yesterday about the handbook potentially being almost finalized from our consultant, so we may be adding that to it. I would say that the max I would need is an hour, but it could be as little as a half hour, depending on the agenda.
Would it be possible for HR committee members to do an hour either on the 14th or negotiations start at 4 o'clock?
I think, Rich, at that meeting, I think at the HR committee, I think Rick was the only one that was able to attend that.
And that's, that's this Wednesday, that would be kind of tight to get things together. The 21st, we have the negotiations at 8 o'clock. Would HR committee members be able to stick around for a little while after that?
It just depends on how long the first meeting lasts.
With the union.
What if we, if we did an hour and a half for that from 8 until 9:30, and then we did the second HR committee meeting from 9:30 until 10:00?
You can put it together for a half hour.
I think it'd be safe, but I think we should schedule an hour. Can we get you until 10:30?
No.
Okay.
I can stay as long as I can, but.
Come early and do it.
Yeah, we'll be before.
Seven to eight.
Yeah, I can do that.
John?
I can do that.
Yeah, yeah.
So 7:00 AM on the 21st. How do you do?
Rich, for the meeting design and schedule, how much time are you looking for?
For which one?
For the, the board, the full board meeting, how long is it, are you looking for?
I think we probably should schedule, it might take up to two hours. So we should schedule two hours. And we'll reach out on that one. That was everything.
Do you have any meeting dates? All right, we have gotten to the bulk of the regular agenda. We have an exec session here we're going to contemplate in a moment. However, before we do that, I will apologize to our virtual audience, but those of you in attendance, it is treat night because it is June Dairy Month, and in my book of shameless self-promotion, I'm a little bit cooler up here, has, has some treats from the dairy world that I would like everyone to partake in. We're going to take a five to 10 minute chance to recess and do that. So we'll get our business out of the way here, change to exec, and then invite everybody to have a little treat. So pursuant to Wisconsin statutes 19.85 sub 1 and the E, and statute 1982 sub 1, which is deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. Topics will be discussion on the transportation, contact, contract negotiations, review of MEA, negotiations with MEA, and next steps. So a motion pursuant to, pursuant to that would be entertained.
Certainly.
Thank you, Rick and Jennifer, and we'll roll call voted it, starting at my left, Mr. Ed and Jennifer.
Yes.
Joe is yes, Rick?
Yes.
Tracy?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
We are in executive session. Please come up and crack open the cooler and see what the girls brought you.